Let there be light. We want to welcome everybody. There's a little bit of echo in the building, but when we get all the draperies up, we kind of think that that'll take care of the echo. So we're just gonna kinda put up with it. If you can't hear us tonight, just yell out and say so. At the Board of Works, we didn't do too good. Now I'll ask all the councilmen to grab a mic and speak into it when you're talking, okay? Welcome to this historic event. Tonight, we're meeting in the historic Roberts Building. The building in the park that is named after the founder of the park, and it's the only building that bears his name, and I think it's quite historic. Before we start our meeting, we're going to have an invocation. The invocation is always given by a member of the clergy, or whoever wants to give it, and it's given for the benefit of the council. If you don't want to participate in the invocation, it's okay, and it won't affect the reason that you come here, has nothing to do with it. And we invite all creeds, nationalities, and any religious sect that would like to come and do the invocation, it's called Melissa at the mayor's office, and we'll be glad to do that. We're honored tonight, as we were this afternoon, to have John Reynolds, and after we have the pledge, Reverend John Reynolds from Calvary Baptist Church will be asking our invocation. So with that, I'd like all to stand if they would. The pledge will be led by Fred Shol.
My pledge to religion is to be inspired by the United States of America and to be rebapt and for its saints, one nation, covered by God, and in His name, holy, holy, and blessed for all.
As today, we would still like you to remember the Reese family, if you would.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you again this evening, Lord Jesus, and we acknowledge publicly that you are our refuge and strength, a very present help in time of trouble. And God, we pause for these few moments, and we remember the Reese family. God, we pray that you comfort them with your care, with your love, with your grace. And God, we pray that you be near to them during their time of grieving and loss. And God, again, we commit this meeting into your hands. We pray for the mayor and the council, men and women, and all those in leadership of this great city, Father. And we're thankful for all those that are making it great. Lord, you're the one that makes it great. And we invite you in here this evening. We pray that you would just give wisdom and guidance in every decision that's made and everything that is presented tonight. Let our words be seated with songs. Let our hearts be open to your ways and your will. And God, we just pray that you would, your favor would shine upon our city in a big way that we would know that it is you. Lord, we just pray you be with us in these next few moments, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. With this being our regular meeting, we'll first have a roll call.
Councilwoman Rich. Present. Councilwoman Weber.
Here.
Councilman Shomel.
Present.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Here.
Councilman Creach.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Let the record show that we have six council people present. We have a quorum, and we can do business. Next item of business would be, let's everybody turn their phone to vibrate, or to off, or whatever's handy for you. Then we'll have the reading of the minutes of the last city council meeting. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion on the floor that the minutes of the last meeting be approved as they were sent out to the council people. We have a second. Is there any additions or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, I'll ask you, as you speak, take the mic right up to you. We want to talk to the people that are on TV at home. It may not be comfortable, but we want everybody to hear. On our new business, we have Resolution 2013-05. It's a reimbursement in the police department from telephone, or into telephone. Four hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. We also have a Resolution 2013-06, reimbursement fire, eighty-one dollars and twelve cents into gear. If it's okay, I'd like to take those two resolutions together.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept Resolution 2013-05 and 2013-06.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to take Resolutions 2013-05 and 2013-06, both reimbursements at the same time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have pending ordinance 3005. This ordinance has an additional appropriation in the police. This is a public hearing. Seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for radio. We're opening a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody out there that would like to talk about the police radios at seventeen thousand five hundred dollars? Police chief, if you'll get to the stand there, please. If you'll give a brief information why we're doing this.
Getting new portable radios.
Move the mic up to you. That's it.
That's a lot better. Getting new portable radios for my patrol division, the ones they have. We had them narrow-banded, but they're older models, and they're falling apart. We've been parting them out to keep them going with other radios. For instance, myself and Dennis, we don't even have a portable radio right now because we gave ours to the line. Twenty, we'll take care of the line guys, and then we'll accumulate the twenty, or the nineteen, I should say, that are working, and we'll bring them in. Dennis and I will take a couple of them and give them to our, also the extras, to our part-time officers. The part-time officers don't have radios now, so I'd take their radios and put them out on the street, too. We're in this dire straits. The radios we have, I think we purchased in 1995, so they're eighteen years old, and they're obsolete, and they don't even make parts for them. That's why we had to be cannibalizing other radios to keep them going. So the twenty I want to purchase is just to replace the ones on the street for the guys on the street, and like I said, we'll make do with them and milk them out a little more. So that's what it's all about.
Anybody in the audience that would like to speak about the radios? Anybody come here to speak about that? Going once, twice? Anybody? None appearing, we'll close the public hearing. We'll throw this to the council. Council, we brought this before you, two weeks ago. You gave us permission to advertise for a public hearing. Tonight's the public hearing, and the decision time. I'll take your comments.
David, did you get that straightened out about the cases?
Yes, that was added price, was sixteen, whatever it was. We had to add that on there. It was a, they didn't put nineteen holders on there, they just put one on there, if you recall. For like fifty dollars, but they had to go ahead and put them all in there, and that was the price after they were added.
Okay.
Any other discussion up here, the council?
Well, I think something we need in our, I'll make the motion that we need it.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to pass pending ordinance 3005. This ordinance will make an additional appropriation of the general fund for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to buy police radios for the police department. Any further discussion up here? None appearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rich. Yes. Councilwoman Weber.
Yes.
Councilman Shomel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilman Creach.
Yes.
Okay, you have passed that with six votes positive. Would you like to suspend the rules and move on to third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 3005 on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? None opposed, we can move forward if you'd like.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor to pass pending ordinance 3005 on third and final reading, taking seventeen thousand five hundred dollars from the general fund, placing it into the police department budget to purchase radios for the police department. Discussion? Any? I'll take a motion.
Yes.
I have a motion, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I assume since you all voted positive the first time, you are gonna vote positive the second time. We have pending ordinance 3006, an additional appropriation. This would put forty thousand dollars in the Grand Avenue project, in the engineering. This is part of our down payment in the Grand Avenue project. We've got quite a bit of money to put in there, and we're putting this in for engineering. This isn't something that we like doing, but in order to get the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, two-fifty? What was the cardboard check? Two million? Two-point-five million? Yeah. They gave us a cardboard check up in Indianapolis about two, three years ago, and we're making the match for that. That's what this forty thousand's for. We'll be doing Grand Avenue all the way from Twentieth to Twenty-Fourth, and then on east, on Twentieth Street, all the way over to where we hooked up last time. That will start right after the bicentennial.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would you explain some of that to the sewer project?
What? It's a sewer separation project.
Well, it's a street project, too. Street sidewalks.
They call it a streetscape with the sewer project. It'll go from sidewalk to sidewalk. Anybody out there have anything to say about it? Some of you live on Twentieth or Twenty-Fourth? Anybody? We'll close the public hearing and give it to the council for consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to accept pending ordinance 3006.
Second.
We have a motion to pass pending ordinance 3006 on first reading, placing forty thousand dollars in the Grand Avenue project from the Q cap fund improvement fund. Is there any discussion? None appearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Weber.
Yes.
Councilman Shomel.
Yes.
Councilman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilman Creach.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich.
Yes.
You have passed that, six to zero. That passes. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules on pending ordinance 3006. All in favor of suspension of rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We can move forward if you'd like.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance 3006, a move of forty thousand dollars from the Q cap improvement fund on the Grand Avenue project, designed for engineering service. Any discussion? None appearing? A roll call vote.
Councilman Shomel.
Yes.
Councilman Nobby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilman Creach.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich.
Yes.
Councilman Weber.
Yes.
You have passed that, six to zero, on the final reading, so that becomes an ordinance. We're gonna take a little minute here to talk about the James Roberts Building, because there's some people that have to leave. And this James Roberts Building sat here since the time, I can't give you the exact date, but when Maury Connell was home last summer, he said he was the mayor that closed it down. So it was during his time, and I'm not sure whether it was the first year or two, or the second year or two. I took him up here, and we had it all tore apart. It was just in shambles when he came, and he said he'd be anxious to come back when he comes for the bicentennial, to see it. We took it to the council about two and a half years ago, and asked the council for a decision, did they want to go ahead and renovate it so it could be used, or did we want to tear it down and make a parking lot? And it passed, and I believe the vote was four to three, to go ahead and start improving it and try to get it in shape so that it could be used. The Miller Building is really busy every weekend, during the week, and especially during Christmas and the holidays, during the summer with all the family reunions. So we began to do this, first with volunteers, and I'm gonna start in chronological order. Our first group of volunteers came through the bicentennial, or HPC, committee, and those of you that were in the crowd tonight that worked up here in that cold day and took all the window trim down, took the windows, if you'll please stand, all of you that worked that day. Remain standing, if you will, for a little bit. Would you like to say anything, any of you? We appreciate all that you've done, and of course, that got us going. One of the biggest worries, how were we to get the windows built like they looked in the first place? And we worked at it, and we worked at it, and a guy by the name of Jeff Church, and I don't think Jeff's here tonight, but his mother is. I saw her when she first came out. So we contacted Jeff, and Jeff, in no time, built these windows on a native poplar. And then we researched, and we found there's some stuff called Permachink, makes a stain that you can put on raw poplar. We put two coats, the kids did it last summer while they were working up here. And it's supposed to preserve the wood and last for a hundred years, it keeps the ultraviolet light out of it. So the windows were done. Then Jeff came back this last few weeks and did all of the glazing, that's the word I was trying to, you know, nobody glazes windows anymore. I call it putting putty in, but they call it glazing. And they did all that work, and just this last week, where the windows were put in, and the old boards were taken off the outside. So that's chronological, what's happened. Now, there was another man that was responsible for part of this project, and he comes to us from Wayne County. I'm talking to you, Joe, and I'd like for you to come over to the podium and tell a little bit of the history you know about this building, what took place. And give me your title and all that stuff, because I don't remember it all.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Joe Frost. Some of you may know me, others may not, but I am a community preservation specialist with Indiana Landmarks. Indiana Landmarks is a statewide, non-for-profit for historic preservation advocacy, and we have nine regional offices, and I work out of the eastern regional office in Cambridge City, I'm the host now. So I've had the privilege to work with the Historic Preservation Commission and the citizens of Connersville on this project in the past year or so. In fact, I came on to Indiana Landmarks in November of 2011, and this project sort of preceded me by a little bit, and it did in the form of what's called our Ten Most Endangered List. Each year, Indiana Landmarks selects ten historic properties from across the state, and basically puts them on this endangered list. And these are usually buildings that, if something's not done, those buildings will no longer be with us. And it was placed on that list in 2010, and it sort of built awareness, got people thinking, and had it not been for that list, and had it not been for the people in this room, we would be having this meeting right now in a parking lot. So I congratulate each and every one of you, and the mayor, the park staff, for a wonderful job well done. How many of you have seen this at some point prior to this, during the renovation? I've seen it at various stages, when it was just studs, when it was just plaster, and it's truly a transformation. This building will last another hundred years plus. I think, is it Jeff's mom? Yeah, thank you for having Jeff, because the windows wouldn't be here if you hadn't done that. So I really look forward to this building being used in your community. I hope each and every one of you do, too, in a wedding, ceremonies, city council meetings, et cetera. It's an incredible experience to be able to say that you saved this building. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Now, when it came time to get this done, we made Mr. Bottomley's hair curl from time to time, and Mike has had a tremendous staff. He and I meet here every morning at eight o'clock, we argue a little bit, and we decide how we're gonna complete the day, what we're gonna do. Connersville doesn't have the privilege of having a city engineer, so all you got's a dumb mayor and a real smart park superintendent. And believe me, Mike has watched the money constantly. I'll come in, and I'll say, "Mike, we gotta have this." But let me check the budget, let me check the budget, let me. And we spent ourselves broke right about Christmas time, and then the council was good enough to come along and help us out again. So Mike, I would like for you to get up to the podium, and then I want everybody that physically worked in this building to come up and stand in front of the stage. I think I got some guys in the back, and I don't see well enough to tell, I wanted our school kids, some of them to come tonight. Did any of them get to come? Come on, come on up front with Mike. The school kids come, and these are good kids that work hard on their hands and knees, and laid tile, and did electric, and put baseboard in, trimmed the windows, and hand them the mic so they can introduce themselves, Mike. There's a bunch more, and one of these days, we have a regular city council meeting, I'll get them all down there, but these are two of them, and they're hard workers.
Hello, I'm Justin Sullivan from Rose County.
I'm Alex Trish from Cars, Cars on High School Course, and I, I'm in the AM class, he's in the PM class, I believe.
These classes come with the school bus each morning and each afternoon, work two and a half, sometimes they squeetch a little bit, and work almost three hours. And the other day, when I come in, they were down on their knees, laying the tile in the bathrooms. They're hard workers. And why I want to make such fuss about this is because some people put some graphene on the outside of the building, made me very unhappy. But I want you to hear about the kids that are doing a good job, and I think we probably got about twenty-four strong that have actually been working here off and on over the months. And they have bought into this building, they're proud of this building, and they're proud of what they've learned to do. Our maintenance man, Billy, has worked with them on laying tile, cutting tile, and Dwight, Dwight Grant works with them, and he really works with them and teaches them a lot, so let's give these kids a big hand. Now, you boys just stand there. Mike, is there anybody else, or any of the park people here?
I don't think anybody came.
Huh?
Bill had something else going on tonight.
Okay. Okay, you go right ahead and tell them about our park people, how they bought into this.
Well, first of us, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for their support with this project. Right now, the building's looking great, and hopefully, when we're finished, something we'd be proud of. Here in the next couple of weeks, we should be finishing the restrooms in the kitchen, and in April, the outside for the parking lot, additional parking, sidewalks, and those type of things. I have four full-time park employees, and when they're not doing our everyday trash to check, those type of things, they've been in this building. Bill Donso has been huge in this project, can't say enough how much work he's done. And Clarence Colgate, which is my other park employee, they're pretty much in here daily, every day, and my other two guys, Kenny Sullivan and Charles Menado, they're here probably twenty-five, thirty hours a week, trying to get this project done. So I'm very proud of those guys, and they're all union guys, and they want to see this happen. And I think all of them has been with the park system for twenty-plus years, and they've seen this building what it was, and so they're very excited helping with this project.
I appreciate it. Now let's move one step forward. We got the windows in, and we got things going our way, we got the school kids working. We began to worry, all these windows, and we're gonna have sunlight, we're gonna have plays, and not only that, you hear the echo in here, we gotta have drapes or curtains, because we need something to absorb the sound. So I'll give credit to my assistant, Melissa. I said, "Melissa, get on the computer and get down in the south where they make that material, and find some company that's trying to get rid of a lot of material, and give me the colors." And she did. In about two days, she gave me color swatches. I got ahold of Diana Wright, and my cohort over here, and Mike, and we found this material, and my memory's failing me, but we bought it, what, five hundred bucks? Hundred and sixty yards for five hundred bucks. You can feel the material on this drape over here. Then I worried all winter, who's gonna sew it? Well, Donna Scott and I had a big plan, we were gonna have the Home Ec Club sew it. I forgot how heavy that material is, it won't go through a home sewing machine. So I got ahold of my friend, Earl Whipple. You know Earl with the pretty gray hair? Earl, come forward. Come on. Mr. Bennett, come on, you own the business. Come on, Mr. Bennett, come on up here and take credit. I know my wife's had drapes made from time to time, and when you have drapes made, it's expensive. So I told Mr. Whipple and Mr. Bennett, we don't have much money, and I said, "We need these drapes made." So they went down some figuring, and he came back to me, and he said, "We'll sew them all and make them for you, for this hall, just this big room, five hundred bucks, we'll do them all." Last month, they've been working on them. They have been working on them, and a set of the drapes are right over here to the left. They put that up in a hurry, we're gonna take them down, because we're gonna sand the floor. So when we got those drapes going pretty good, we had to have a drape rod, so I started looking at drape rods. My gosh, they were twenty-five dollars for each end, and so Mike and I went over to Yilmans', and we bought those inch-and-a-quarter dowel rods, and we took them over to the garage, believe it or not, the garage where they fixed the trucks. And our mechanic over there said, "Well, I can make one of them holders," and he made those beautiful holders up there. Had to make thirty of them, and we're in the process now, trying to wiggle somebody in the powder coating them for us. We've got the color we want. Soon as we, oh, Donna is back there, I see her nodding her head now. Donna Scott. Donna, take a bow, you helped us with that. Take a bow. So Phil Hamilton and his helper are making all the drapery holders up there, and they made a little jig to make them in, and he's got all the parts made, all he has to do is weld them together. He also is responsible for the railing around the lift, and we know that the lift works, we used it tonight for the first time, so we know it works. That makes our building upstairs handicap accessible. I hope I haven't left anybody out. What do we plan to do in the future? Well, first, I want to tell you, there's two dressing rooms up here, so if you have a play, you can dress in here. There's also a stairway that goes down the basement, there's a room down here, we intend to paint that room up and paint the floor. On the left out there is the men's room, it'll, the men's bathroom, and on the right is the ladies restroom. Soon as we get the tile down, we'll install it. And Jeff has not only built the windows, those doors back there were all kicked in and broke, he rebuilt those doors, and he's building two doors for the restroom in the kitchen that will match those, so all the doors in here look just like they did in 1936, when they built this building. The Lions Club, and again, Mr. Whipple helped me with this. I went to Lions Club and asked them, they'd like to do something in the park, and the Lions Club's been great, they put the roof on the amphitheater, they put the lights in the park, oh, I can't even name all the things they've done over the years. Repainted and redid the benches in the amphitheater, worked on the pavilion project, raised the money. They've always been great. I said, "What are you guys gonna do in this project?" They had a board meeting two weeks ago, and they agreed to pay for the kitchen. They're paying for all the kitchen cabinets, the sinks, faucets, including the bathrooms. And Mr. Whipple has applied to the Lions Foundation for a grant to help with that, so that was taken care of. Then there's a lot of you that bought windows, five hundred bucks a piece for those windows. Everybody in here bought a window, raise your hand. Raise your hand up with me. There's a lot of people bought windows. All the windows were five hundred bucks, and that helped us pay for the glass and helped us pay for all the stuff we had to do. I hope I haven't missed anything. We have an office back there, and in just a little bit, we'll be finishing the meeting. When we do, I want you to go around, look back at these changing rooms, and look at what's happened here. And look at the office. We have storage over on the left. From the Huffmeyer Estate, we were given so much money, and we just get so much a year for a certain amount of years, and then the city will get all of the money that's left to the city. And I don't know if all of you remember the Huffmeyer Plumbing, Wayne and Art Huffmeyer Brothers. They left money to the city to be used only in Roberts Park. It has to be used here, and they designated that the Board of Works is to decide where it's to be used. We've been able to use the interest off of that money. That's what put the new sound system in here. We have a complete sound system. Our IT man and Mr. Palsy, take a bow wherever you are, they installed this sound system, and there's more of it to do. It's just... We're just getting it there. We have a curtain up here that the school corporation gave us. We're working with the school now to get it cut off to fit this, so we'll be able to close the curtain, and you won't have to look at us. We're working on battens. Where's the lady who wants me to do battens? Tell them what a batten is. I really don't know. Stand up and tell them.
Battens. Battens are a sort of ceiling. They're made of that. That's what the background's made of. It's a sound, whole background.
We're working on that. Soon as I find someone that'll furnish 'em or give 'em to us, we'll have 'em. Did I miss anybody, Mike? I don't wanna miss anybody because everybody has been so great. Mr. Isaacs did the drywall in here, and he worked in here when he didn't have something else to do. We got it all done, and it just looked beautiful. Then we realized the ceiling was way too big. It expanded and contracted. So, we had to go back and cut the ceiling. That's what you see, that cut in it, and put expansion joints all through it, and then repaint it. The lighting, we wanted to put fluorescent lighting all over that was dimmable until we found out it was $18,000, and then we changed our mind, and so we did this. Now, if you were having a program in here like we're having tonight, you would use this. Shut the big lights off, John, so we can see what... Now, if you were having a dance in here, this is more what you might see. Or a play. We got mood lighting, and all of that is dimmable all the way around the perimeter of it, as is all this light up here. There, he's showing you. Okay, let there be light. Well, I hope I haven't missed anybody.
I think, did we mention Scott's electric class?
No, would you do that? Yeah.
They've been all the outlets, you know, in the hall, in the kitchen, in the restrooms. So, the vocational school has been with us here, I think, for well since about 1st of February, helping us out.
John Bascom, also our assistant superintendent. Whenever he's not over there holding David Job's hand, he's over here working. But he likes to hold David Job's hand a lot, doesn't he, Mike?
I want TV. Uh, no. He's here all the time.
And Mr. Job has been great to help us whenever we need a backhoe, whenever we need a dump truck. This building has got a lot of infrastructure in, all-new wiring throughout, 440 amps, all-new plumbing. If you'd see the plumbing down underneath the bathrooms in the kitchen, how beautifully it's done. And I did miss somebody. We did take quotes on a heating and air system, and we needed five furnaces and five air conditioners in here. Cold Iron got the bid, and I think the bid was 35... $34,000 for five furnaces, five air conditioners installed, running tonight. That's all I heard of, so that was a great deal for us. If I miss something, you ask Mike about it. But we're gonna dedicate this building on Flag Day, June 17th or 14th, whatever it is. We're gonna have a dedication ceremony in here. It can be used for the bicentennial. It's already being booked for family reunions and a lot of things. We're gonna still sand the floor and put gym coat on it, finish the bathrooms, put the doors in, and then, as Mike said, start on the outside, put a new sidewalk and a new porch out there. Jeff's gonna rebuild the front doors. If you thought they looked junky when you came in, he said, "Don't worry about 'em. I'm gonna rebuild 'em." And when he gets done, they look like they did in 1936. We had a little bit of a bad luck. Someone stole the lights off the posts, oh, six, 10 months ago. But I've got a guy that's building lights out there to match the old ones that were there. We got pictures of 'em, and we're gonna have lights back up there. We plan to have a lot more parking. We're gonna have handicap parking around the back. We got a big parking lot over here, and we plan to get all the parking that we can get. Thank you for being patient, and thank you for coming tonight. Now, don't leave unless you eat cookies and punch because Mike arranged to get that over here. We're gonna go through our reports. It won't take us very long, and then we'll be ready to do it. We're gonna start with EDG, Pete Bell, President of the Economic Development Group.
Good evening. I'm gonna be able to then from your handout and ask... Julie, I'm gonna have to ask.
If you'll speak into the mic, sir. You're on TV.
Let me start with that. Anyway, House Bill 528 is in the House now. We've been asked to... Let me back up. For the last six weeks, Mayor and I and folks from the county have been working with the folks from Lawrenceburg, Grant Hughes, to try to get this bill set aside. Julie, can you tell what the exact impact of riverboat money is to this community?
Which riverboat are we talking about?
Both of them.
Both of them?
Yeah. It impacts the whole riverboat program.
It's a lot of money. Most recently, they gave us $6 million towards a carbon motors project. We received... Last year, we received $79,000 in riverboat money, which was down considerably. In past years, it's been from $95,000 to $100,000 a year.
And as I understand it, both the city and the county get that money.
Yes, yes.
So, the total impact of the annual would be about $180,000. Plus the available funds, if we have a project like the carbon motors project, they have monies that are available for us to access. That said, they need our support. On Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the House, there will be a hearing related to House Bill 528. And the bill, just capitalizing the bill, it's an attempt to reduce or eliminate the funds that communities like ours receive. So, I've asked the mayor, if the police chief and fire chief, because I think they benefit from those funds. Anybody sitting there that can join us at 9 o'clock in Indianapolis, it would be appreciated. And I think we need to show them our support so they can continue to support us. Anyone that's interested in going can contact Melissa, and she'll make arrangements to figure out transportation. Last week, we had a meeting. These things are not on the agenda. Last week, we had a meeting. Heard me speak about our need for a spec building. I was asked a question by the county council, is what do we market after the Visteon building is gone? What buildings do we have that we can use to attract a business to our community? And so, we thought we would investigate the cost of developing a spec building. We got some of those costs this past weekend. Did you get those?
Yes.
Okay. And we should have another set coming, but we did have a meeting with them, and it is something for you guys to keep in the back of your minds, that if we're gonna market the community, we gotta have something to sell. Project The Arsnoth, we've been in constant conversation with them, weekly and in some instances, daily. That project is moving forward. Project Jet, I thought that spring break for the gentleman that owns the company was this week, so I've been telling you that he would be here on the week of 17th. His spring break is actually next week. We spoke with his mother, and he will be coming in next week. Project R continues to touch base, and I think I might have explained to you that they're hoping that one of these larger projects that we are working on takes place, and that will let them make a decision to come here or finalize a decision to come here. We had an exciting, exciting trip. We'll back up. We had a site visit about five weeks ago, six weeks ago?
Four.
From a company out in New Jersey. It's on the back of your sheet called Project Maury. It was a very interesting site visit. The owner of the company that came to visit us impressed me because he had four Rolls-Royces, so I was impressed. We got to spend time with him, show him our community, and that evening, and it was the evening that we had this awful ice storm. We went to Indianapolis for dinner, and at the end of that evening, I felt that I deserved a medal, for those of you who have ever ridden with Leonard. It was an exciting experience, but we do it all the time, so I'm somewhat accustomed to it, but just not in an ice storm. But we had dinner, a very nice dinner, and spent some time with them. Leonard developed a relationship with the company's owner, and we were invited to visit his facility in New Jersey. So, we took off on a Friday morning about 3 o'clock.
3:30.
Okay. And flew to New Jersey, went to visit his facility, and were impressed with what we saw there. We continued to communicate with him, and we are one of three communities that they're considering. So, again, we keep our fingers crossed and hope that these things develop. We also attended the Japanese-American Association where Senator Lugar was the speaker. Very gracious gentleman, thinks very highly of this community. And Hart Barker and... Can't remember who one was. Anyway, we went to Rushville for a regional economic development initiative meeting.
Shirley Wise.
Shirley, yes. And one of the things we're looking at, there are grant funds available that we can't access because we're not a part of a regional organization. So, and we were in the past, but it didn't work out too well. So, they're looking at forming a new organization, a new regional organization that would allow us to access DDA funds. Those funds are primarily used for infrastructure, for streets, and so on, so that's something else that we pursue. Any questions?
I can add to it, Pete. I didn't get to tell you because I haven't seen you much today. The Board of Works voted today unanimously not to extend the sale agreement beyond March the 31st. And I think Fran, if you'll pull the microphone up to you, will you explain what the Board of Works was thinking when they did that?
We felt that the gentleman that was made the offer in the middle of last year was given sufficient time to find an occupant for the building. He wanted an extension of, I believe, two months. We felt that it was tying our hands, keeping us from speaking with any other prospective occupiers of the former Visteon building. So, the board, after much discussion, decided that we would end their agreement March the 31st. The gentleman wanted a continuation because he felt he was in good negotiations with a prospective occupier. However, we felt that he had had sufficient time to complete the deal, so we decided to end the agreement on its scheduled date of March the 31st. Is that good enough?
I think that's great. I don't know, Pete, if you concur with that, you'll be telling the Economic Development Group, I presume, on Wednesday when you meet with them.
And I think it's important, Mr. Mayor, to say that that does not exclude this prospective buyer from buying the building. He just doesn't have exclusive rights to the building.
That's right. Yes. He can still be a person interested in trying to occupy it.
It tied our hands, and we weren't able to take other offers when we were in Limbo, and we'd been in Limbo for six months. I think the Board of Works made the right decision.
I agree. One other thing that I forgot to mention under completed projects, on April 6th, which I think is a Saturday, James Hamilton and Hamilton Lawn Care Service will be having an open house in Riverdale. They'd like to invite all of you to come, and I think they'll have some sale items or items that reduce costs there for that day. Questions? Thank you very much.
You guys be sure and eat some cookies down. Mike baked those cookies all morning, so go back and have some punching cookies. Mike Sparks, we plan to leave at 7:30. The time has been changed at the State House. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
Okay, I think most of us are gonna leave at 7:30 and...
Where are we?
At the House, right, Melissa? We go to the House the first time. The State House, the Senate Chamber is on one floor, and the House is on the other. We'll meet outside the House Chamber at 9:30, and they're gonna consider it at, what, quarter to 10, right? 10 o'clock. So, I'd like to see everybody that's going to Indianapolis with us on the 21st. That'll be Thursday, to be at the House Chamber by 9:30. Ron Cold Iron has room for five. Anybody who wants to ride up with him? He doesn't wanna take an empty car. My car is full. I'm taking John Baker and a couple of the councilmen with me. Anybody else wants to drive? We should have a good showing up there if we can. Melissa, when do you have to tell 'em? Wednesday morning. She needs to tell the House and Senate how many will be there. So, if you'll give that to Melissa. Okay? Try to encourage people to go. This is very important, and it's once-in-a-lifetime. Thank you. EMS, go. Speak into the mic. Get it right over there to you.
Ready?
Speak into it.
For the city's share for the month of February, we spent $38,395.27. Our receipts was $16,990 for a total of $21,494.37. We made 180 runs, and for the year-to-date, the city's share within $83,649.04. Our receipt was $34,276.13 for a total of $49,372.90, and total revenue was $391.
Thank you, Dale.
Month report for February. Revenue's $6,307. Activities, my expense report is attached. Activities, programming, soccer signups are finished. We ended up with about 210 kids, ages 3 through 12, and our partners, Mid-Center Soccer Club, which is 13 and up, probably ended up with 100-plus kids. Our youth indoor soccer league just ended March 12th, and our indoor high school league is starting on March... We had games last week, and we have nine teams, seven local teams, two teams from out of town playing in that league. The restrooms and shelters and all that stuff in the park will be open by April 1st. Don't forget about the... We still have two weeks left on the 50% off the pool discount, so the season passes. And also, April 20th, chicken dinner, fundraiser for the Roberts Building, chicken fried by the Knights of Columbus at the Miller Center, from 4 to 8. And this Thursday is our annual Easter egg hunt. Starts at 5:00 sharp. If you're 5:05, you'll probably miss it. It will be located at the Roberts Park Theater, ages 3 through 10, and bring your own baskets. Any questions?
Mike, what did you say?
50% off the regular price. Got two more weeks.
Mike, I was just wondering why the Easter egg hunt is so early? Isn't that a lot earlier than usual?
I think it was Easter falls a little earlier this year. Target period before Easter, spring break, they wanted during spring break.
I was thinking it's before, you know...
It's only cold that day. It is early with Easter.
Spring break's next year.
The way everything's set up, it's so happy on that day.
Easter's early this year, too. It's first day of, no, the last day of March. Usually it's up in April, a couple of weeks.
I didn't realize.
Yeah. And then the next week, Debbie, is spring breaks. You couldn't have a drink?
That's what I didn't know.
Yeah.
No kids.
But you're right, it's really early this year. Thanks, Mike. Police.
Okay, for the month of February, I had 865 law reports, 11 citations, three ordinance violations, four warnings issued, four personal injury accidents, 34 property damage accidents, zero fatalities, and 59 arrests. And Fran, you be proud, my overtime is down.
That's great, but you're showing the cost of gasoline for the month. Did you get it free, or what?
Well, no, we're not getting it for free, but also with you, I did get them out in time, and I put them on your, in front of your table up there in front of you.
That's right.
That's our mileage, everything. If you check the mileage, it don't look too bad, really, compared to what it used to. And also, also, I have another thing to bring up.
We'll take care of that here.
You want to do that separately?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me get the reports over with here.
Any questions on the reports?
Street Department?
As you can see on the report, what we've done, and we just keep on doing it. Something I'd like to stress to everybody, though, is that we've had several calls, but more calls on this large trash thing. That all starts next Monday, the 25th. I'd like for people to call, and please get on board with this, and we want to get this town cleaned up with my sentinels. So the places I go, I see more stuff than I ever knew that we had, so we need to get rid of it. So please, please call the Street Department, and we'll get you on the list, and we'll get it all the way for you.
Devin, Devin, I didn't have an opportunity to get back with you, that his people removed 13 tons of heavy trash the month of February.
Is that what it was, 13 tons?
Yes.
So, that's pretty good, isn't it?
Absolutely.
And something else, so everybody knows, we're Good Friday, we are working, we are picking up trash on Good Friday, so we're going to not disrupt trash pickup that week. It'll be just the same as a regular day.
Will that not continue on until Thanksgiving?
Yeah, Thanksgiving, we'll have to probably work Saturday, we'll have to do something for that Thursday, because if it's holiday, such a trash app, we'll pick it up.
And remember, don't put your big trash out until you call them, and it's the last week of each month. I saw some around today, all stacked up. Don't do that.
And when they do call, we do ask, and not set it out till the 23rd, 24th, but sometimes they do, and, but I appreciate if they didn't. It just kind of makes the town look a little bit better until we pick it up.
Transfer station. Anybody have any questions for Tom?
There's a pile of time.
Tom, you got anything you want to tell us?
No, just, excuse me, David Hook's removed 13 tons of heavy trash, and I think what David has initiated, along with the mayor's approval, is really working out well. We don't, well, the town doesn't look like the back of the road next. That's a compliment to David. Thank you.
Fire Department?
Park time for six days for savings, around $2,050. 76 total runs, 256 hours of mortgages, and 10 inspections, six investigations, two pre- branding tours, and 121 hours of training.
Troy has a request. Go ahead, stay up there, Troy. I'm going to take yours. Troy needs to get, I believe it's seven radios. He has to go to narrow band, just like the police department, and he's asked us to, asked for an additional appropriation for how much money, Troy, I forgot. Okay. I'd like for you to give him permission to advertise for a public hearing for next time. We haven't got any choice, it's the same thing. They changed to narrow band. Their radios don't work, can't be remodeled. And on the same token, the state has come along now, and we're going to have to do all our fingerprinting electronically. We can't do it on cards, send it in. We got to do it electronically, and send it in electronic. So I'd like to ask for a public hearing. How much is that, Julie?
Estimated to be $15,000 for the electronic fingerprint.
$15,000 out of the general fund for electronic printing machine. On the same token, those small places that don't have a fingerprint electronic machine can buy fingerprinting service from us. We're too big a department to try to go to Cambridge or Richmond and buy it. We fingerprint people every day for handguns, and we send it all over the country. So we can have all this discussion, but I think the best thing to do is advertise for a public hearing on both these issues, and then we'll hash it out, train the public hearing, if it's okay with you.
Julie, where do you recommend taking the money from?
I think we'll just have to take it from the general fund.
I move that we authorize, if we're true, to advertise additional funding, sending for the fire and police departments.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second to advertise for a public hearing. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll have a public hearing the next time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You know, it's aggravating, the state comes along with these rules and regulations, and we got to figure out how to, how to fund it. They changed the band on the radio, we got to figure out how to fund it. One of these days, we're going to send something to the state, and tell them, you figure out how to fund it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're trying to take our money away.
TV Director, John Posy.
We had 10 hours, 57 minutes of meetings last month, 7 hours, 43 minutes of original programming, 4 hours, 25 minutes of TV3 Volt programming, which we continue to do three out of the year. And I guess it's a total of 12 hours and 9 minutes of original programming for the month. We did a lot of basketball last month. We also did the park system, 326 rated, or soccer games. We did a couple of those. Those are incredible. There's a lot of, very intense action up close. We are live tonight from the facility here at the Roberts Building, and we're able to do that with the three of us actually working together to get that done. Ben Houston, the IT Director, has had the studio tonight monitoring the feed, and making sure that it remains live. We are sending from the production vehicle outside, where Justin is switching, and sending to the tower. The tower is then sending six back to the studio using white light.
John, let us remind the criminals that are listening out there, that same tower is watching our buildings on cameras, and we're recording it in our security room in the park. So anybody that wants to put graffiti on, or anybody wants to try to steal or tear up, they're being watched. And if you don't believe it, they're watching this thing on TV from that little box that's sitting out there. You're watching it live from the Roberts Building, so...
Were any more cameras on the highway?
Yeah. If you catch it, you're going to do the time, because the police chief's going to put you in the slammer. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, under old business, I think Kenny wanted to talk a little bit about the trail tonight, Kenny? Kenny, if you, will someone hand him, can you reach the microphone, Kenny? Yeah, just pull it down, that's good.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're hearing fine. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I don't want to drag this thing out, that's not why I'm here, but I just want to make sure to start with that the trail project just isn't killed off. Last meeting, it seemed like there was a few of you that lost interest in it, and were against it, because the property owners now own the property on both sides of it. But if they didn't own that property, would you guys be interested in doing that, that project? I mean, if the city of Connersville owned that land, would you be interested in still doing, finishing that project?
Kenny?
Yeah?
If I may, I've talked to Gabe about this.
Will you speak into the mic? I can't hardly hear you.
Sorry.
Bring it up.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Kenny, like when I talked to Gabe, you know, we were very interested in the trail, but when Mr. Worley had spoke up in regards to the airport property, not being able to cross that, and the issue of who owns the trail, that kind of nicks things.
Well, a lot of the things that Mr. Worley said, I personally don't know if I agree with. The county still has the bypass, they used to call it, that's still in the works to put a road through there. I've got the map over here that goes between the end of the airport and the runway, Antle Creek, which is way north, right up against there. So that's still, that's still planned to do in the future. As far as the ownership of the railroad, we own that. I got the deeds. I've worked on that for a good two years.
Now, when you say "we," what are you talking about?
The city of Connersville. We bought them in 1993 for, or bought that land for $12,470 from the state of Indiana. The state of Indiana bought it for a dollar before that, so I'm guessing the $12,470 was survey costs, attorney fees, and all that, but I've got a copy of this. Connie, can you get this?
Give it to John, send it off.
Thank you.
They bought it from the railroad, Kenny?
I'm sorry?
They bought it from the railroad, the state did? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the state bought, bought the railroad right away.
Okay.
And all of Connersville, not just through Beeson's, but all of the city of Connersville owns that land, which is about 21.1 acres.
That was down Park Road, right, also they bought?
Yeah.
Because of the expansion of Park Road?
Right.
Okay.
So, so we own that land, and that's, that's the deed that we've been looking for for a long time. We own that now. So, so, you know, when the people, there was three or four neighbors up there that lived with that in their backyard, and they didn't want people walking through their backyard. We don't want people walking through their backyard either. That's not the issue. It's not going to be walking through their backyard. Above and beyond that is, I've got the plat from Connersville for the Beeson's Edition when it was created in 1903. Every single one of those roads has an alley, including the west side of Wayne Avenue. So behind all those people that complained because we were going to let people walk through the backyard, their backyard, there's an alley, a 15-foot alley right away, and we own 40 to 50 feet of easement from the railroad. The railroad's different at different points, so Jerry Govan would have to survey it to find out exactly what that is. But there's a huge amount of land back there that's owned by the Connersville. We bought that land, and I want to present that to you guys. We've got a committee with Phil McDaniel and Shirley Wise and a few other people, and what I would, what I'm asking is, I would like a couple of people from City Council to be on our committee, just to meet with us, so we can pass that information to you, so it's not like we have to come to council meetings and protect this, or, or, there's things I'd like to tell you guys that I'm not at liberty to talk about right now, that's good news, I think. You know, I'd like to see Gabe, or Connie, maybe even Debbie be involved in that, but that's why I'm asking if we can do that.
I have a couple volunteers that like to serve on our committee.
When do you meet?
We have to set it up, we don't know yet.
How often are you looking at?
We just meet once or twice, that's all. We wouldn't be a scheduled meeting or anything.
All good.
Is that something you'd like to do, Gabe?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to appoint Gabe to that committee. Is there anybody else on this council? Okay, Connie and Gabe are willing to serve, Kenny. We got to be careful we don't put too many on there, we get a quorum, so... Connie and Gabe will be our official members on your committee. And you got a committee of the county, is that what you're telling me?
I'm sorry?
The county, who's on it from the county? I won't put it in our minutes. Shirley Wise.
Shirley Wise is the most, you know, the one that's involved the most. Her and Bill McDaniel.
And Bill McDaniel.
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend Mike be on the committee as well.
I think you should involve Mike, because he's the park superintendent, he's in charge of all the parks.
We would like that.
Mike, if you can, attend those meetings. Okay? You go okay with that? Okay. All right, we'll officially appoint that committee. Expect you to come back then, in what, in a month, and report to us where we are? Or off?
One of us will, yeah.
In about a month, or what do you?
That's, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, if someone will call Melissa and get it on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other old business tonight? I think we have about pretty good, the old business. Miscellaneous, let's start with you, Mr. Creach. What do you got miscellaneous?
Well, I tell you what I got, Mayor. I was in this building about two months ago with the mayor, and this is just absolutely amazing. I am blown away by it. Mike, you guys are doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creach. We really do appreciate your help. And I didn't, when I was going around thanking people, you know, without the council appropriating the money, it'd still be sitting here in shambles or be torn down. So really, this council has been a brave council. They have stepped out, and we're in very tough economic times, but we've all worked together to find a way to do things. And I did want to thank the fire department tonight. Hey, hold your hands up, guys. We don't have a certificate of occupancy for this building, therefore, we got to have a fire watch when we're in here, in case something would happen. We have all the exits marked, we have two firemen with a fire truck out back, and we had EMS here until they were just called away, just in case something would have happened, because we're in a building that's still under construction. So it's legal to meet here, as long as we have this fire watch. So they're down here watching us and keeping us safe. So if something happened, we could all get out of here real quick. So I appreciate the police, and also the park department for helping run that lift. None of us know how to work that lift out there, it's brand new. And this morning, it went working. Of all days, we had to get the man from Indianapolis, sold it to us down here this morning to get the thing working. But we'll have a nice ramp up to that lift, and hopefully it'll all work, and there'll be an automatic opener on that door, you just hit it, and you'll come in. And we'll have handicap restrooms, and we'll have the whole nine yards here eventually. But give us another month, and you'll see a big difference again. Miscellaneous business, I want to call you Connie, Debbie.
I just want to add my thanks to the mayor's and the rest of the councils for all the work that's been done on this building. It's beautiful. Thank you.
Happy you, Gabe.
I just want to also say, this place looks awesome. After being here when I was a little guy, and coming in for 4-H stuff, looks 100% different in a, in a good way. So I want to talk about that. Also, I wanted to, we talked about the high school students doing real well, and all the things they've done. I just wanted to report back about some FA students we had recently go to a district competition, and we had four of them win in a competing eight contest, and of the eight, they placed in six of those with four winners. So that was a pretty good turnout for them, so just want to commend them.
Thank you, Gabe. Do you have anything, Clerk Treasure?
No.
Mr. Shobal?
Well, I appreciate what my fellow council people have said about the building. I had faith in it from day one, and I think it's important that we remind the folks that Riverboat Money is financing this renovation.
It is, so it's important that you get your voice heard up in Indianapolis Wednesday morning. It's critical. I won't be there, and I'll tell you why. I would love to be there. It's my 25th wedding anniversary, and my wife says I won't be there. And there's, there's some things we do that we're told, and that's...
There's no excuse.
I realize that, but Tom, if you want to...
Your wife had a lot of...
Yeah. But I have written letters, I... But I, I have written letters, I have called our, our representatives, I've called our senators. I've done everything I know to do. I've worked at it, but I cannot be there for the public hearing. You need to show up and show your support Wednesday morning, if you will. Doc?
Oh.
What's your, what's, wait a minute, what's your last name?
Weber.
And I, I, I understand. Can I talk personal to you up there?
Sure.
Huh? Understand you refused to see me before Friday to get my new tooth.
That's not true.
Melissa, you...
Melissa, that is not true. That is not true because... We'll handle this later.
I wanted my new tooth before spring break.
We'll handle this later, big baby. Anyway, I would like to thank everybody for being here tonight and this place does look nice. And, um, is there a way we can email the house for those that can't go, I mean, out there in TV land?
Melissa, Melissa has a website and...
So, we can email or displeasure? Yeah, displeasure.
Yes, you can email.
Okay.
And you can get on Facebook. You can call our state senator and our state representative and the Wayne County State Representative. We got all that at the office. Just call and get it...
That would be good.
I'll use your up, Connie.
I'd just like to say that I'm also very happy that this building looks as nice as it does and a lot of people have done a lot of work. So, thank you.
Mr. Baker, you've been extremely quiet tonight.
Well, you've had no legal problems so far. Nothing's been obvious. I would like to say it's amazing how well this facility has turned out, the renovations, the restorations. With very little tax money spent, to me, that's amazing because you've had community involvement, volunteerism, everything that brings the community together. And as we all know, we need that now. Congratulations to the city council and the mayor for their little paternity.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. On the mayor's report, I just wanna stretch again, 7:30 on Thursday morning, we will leave from City Hall. We need a nice contingent of people up there at the State House. They'll be considering our bicentennial, both in the House and the Senate. And I presume they'll present us with a plaque or confirmation or something. I was there when they did Brookville's and I can't remember what they gave them. I'm hoping the governor will be there and sign it. Don't forget the 20th of April, when we meet over at the Meller Building, be sure and buy your tickets, $8, gets you fried chicken, mashed potatoes, green beans, and dessert. All the proceeds go to help pay for this building. We need a little money, put the sidewalks, landscaping, some sidewalks down the side, blacktop around back, so we gotta concentrate outside now and make it look nice. So, we, we want everybody to buy a chicken ticket. Everybody missed anything, Melissa? Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight and this is an opportunity. Walk around, look at behind the stage, go back and have some cookies and punch and take your time before you go home. Thank you. I'll take a motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.